I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fellas, could we have roll call, please?
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Pulling Camp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our August 15th meeting. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes or make corrections.
I'll make motion, accept them as emailed.
I'll second that.
Motion from Matt, a second from Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you. First thing on the agenda this evening is introduction of a bond ordinance authorizing the Water Works refunding or refinancing of bonds on our existing bond for our water department. And Tim has a cold, but he'll whisper real loud in this microphone so that he projects.
Okay. The purpose of doing the refinancing is twofold. The first is that it will generate a savings over the remainder of the life of the bond to about seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. So it makes sense to do to take advantage of the current rates compared to what they were when the bond was first placed. The second reason is that by reducing your debt service on this bond issue, it frees up existing rate that is generated through the use of water to be applied towards water projects, or it could be applied to a new bond issue such as what we just talked about in the Board of Works meeting with regard to the new water treatment plant that's being proposed out on the east side of town. So it has the impact then of holding down any rate increase that would be needed to handle the debt service related to that bond issue. So those are the reasons for it. The bond ordinance basically structures it as a private placement. We'll use Hilliard Lyons to do that. What they will do is they'll contact anywhere from fifteen to forty banks inquiring about interest in buying the bonds. And rather than bidding it out because the costs are greater, they can actually get better pricing by doing it this way. And it also speeds up the process, which is good because right now the rates have actually dropped just slightly. So we're hoping that we might actually generate a little bit more savings if we can take advantage of these rates as they are currently and they don't skyrocket again. But I anticipate that the timetable of this is if council were to adopt this bond ordinance on all three readings this evening, that we would probably be doing the bond closing as early as the end of this month or the first week in October. So that's kind of the timeframe that we're working with. But to meet that, you do need to consider adoption of the bond ordinance on all three readings.
Yep. Now, we could have Tim read the entire ordinance. It's only twenty-five pages long.
No.
Or we could...
Are you ready for the motion?
Or we could have a motion to introduce this by short title only.
I'll make a... Is this... Would this be dash eight?
This is the next one.
Eight? Okay. I'll make a motion to place Ordinance 2017-8 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion that's... We'll take Matt's second to introduce Ordinance Number 2017-8 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Tim?
Ordinance 2017-8, short title. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana concerning the current refunding of the city of Decatur, Indiana Water Works revenue bonds of 2007, authorizing the issuance of the city of Decatur, Indiana Water Works refunding revenue bonds of 2017, providing for the collection, segregation, distribution of the revenues of the Water Works, safeguarding the interests of the owners of such refunding revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2017-8 on its first reading.
Second. A motion and a second to pass Ordinance 2017-8 on its first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, excuse me. We'll have a roll call, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pulling Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to place Ordinance 2017-8 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. A motion and a second to place Ordinance 2017-8 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim? You want me to read it?
No. Ordinance 2017-8, short title. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana concerning the current refunding of the city of Decatur, Indiana Water Works revenue bonds of 2007, authorizing the issuance of the city of Decatur, Indiana Water Works refunding revenue bonds of 2017, providing for the collection, segregation, distribution of the revenues of the Water Works, safeguarding of the interests of the owners of such refunding revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2017-8 on its second reading.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to pass Ordinance 2017-8 in its second reading. We'll have roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pulling Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for its third reading.
And place Ordinance 2017-8 in its third reading.
Yes.
By short title, no doubt.
So...
Second.
Yes.
Motion and a second to place Ordinance 2017-8 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you.
Ordinance 2017-8, short title. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana concerning the current refunding of the city of Decatur, Indiana Water Works revenue bonds of 2007, authorizing the issuance of the city of Decatur, Indiana Water Works refunding revenue bonds of 2017, providing for the collection, segregation, distribution of the revenues of the Water Works, safeguarding the interests of the owners of such refunding revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I'll make a motion now to pass Ordinance 2017-8 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of Ordinance 2017-8. Fellas, we could have roll call vote.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pulling Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2017-8 has been passed. And that's that. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that is a tax abatement request for... I want to make sure I say this right. A B Cinema? Yeah. I didn't know if it was A B Cinema or A B C Cinema, but it's A B Cinema. Obviously, app holder Barb and Cory. All right. Okay. Hello, Audra.
Audra, Barb.
We have Audra and Barb. Much better than Trevor and Cory.
That's what we got, too.
Pass them that way and then we'll get back. Okay. Take it away, Audra.
Okay. We want to thank you for your time in considering the abatement tonight, and you have the application of being being cast out in front of you right now. A B C Cinema is asking for a tax abatement of five years for personal property and five years for the real estate. And here tonight, we have, like you said, Cory and Barb and Audrey and Trevor from the economic... Adams County Economic Development.
I just wanted to speak, you know, on behalf of the economic benefit of this. I've already passed around to, through Mayor, the cost, estimated cost basis, and I want to reiterate that that cost, the pencil cost to the city is based on the appraised amount. It's all this, it's kind of an estimate based on what they raised amounts of fees. As you can tell, it's fairly low, less than nine thousand dollars of savings. But I feel this would be a good way to support something that's really been asked for about the community. As many of you know through the HBI process and as well as through outreach that I've done, one of the number-one things that people have asked for, you know, how can we improve this community? How can we improve Decatur? Is a movie theater. And Cory, through, not for financial reasons, but because he really wanted to improve the community, is going ahead and doing that on his own dime. We as Economic Development, because we believe that it's important, are helping him out with some revolving loan fund financing. You know, we're putting our money where our mouth is here and lending money for it as well. This is really something that can re... Not necessarily revitalize, because we have a fairly nice downtown, but can bolster downtown and really help the businesses that are already in downtown and help bring new businesses into downtown. Anytime you have something of this nature that's going to draw people downtown, other businesses want to be where the people are. And so we're going to see increased property values in downtown as businesses become more valuable, as more people want to come into the city, more business, more tourism, as people in the surrounding community are going to come in, and really just a more attractive downtown, which is then going to in turn need to help me out, because one of the number-one things I'm working on is workforce development, workforce attraction. And if we have a more vibrant downtown with more things to do, it's going to be easier to attract workers potentially who want to come with here and stay here. So for all those reasons, you know, even though it's not a traditional abatement where it's industry and they're going to hire fifty people, X number of dollars, and they're going to get it back, I really feel that through increased property taxes, through increased economy and the like, you know, you will see the benefit of this.
So I think as we move forward to develop the downtown, we put support behind the plaza. We want the artist lost. We want young people downtown. It'd be nice to give them something to do, and we, I think, would be nice to support that. This is, to me, it's a risky business to invest as much money on something that, you know, people come to. So I would support it.
I agree with you, Scott. And I just, I think we as city councils, we as city, need to support our people in our community that want to improve. And you folks have stepped up to really make an investment in downtown. I think it sets a good example for both people that are already down here, but also, as Trevor has very well stated, that it is our goal to revitalize both downtown and Decatur. And I think as entrepreneurs, you are taking some really great steps to blaze that pathway for others to follow as well. So you're encouraging, and you're encouraged to, yeah, I think you encourage others around. So I would totally, I totally support it.
Not only willingness to risk in our downtown, but in the, we could argue, the most blighted block of downtown.
That is right.
All of a sudden, looks a lot better than it did a few months ago.
Absolutely. And they're not even done yet.
The view of our community has gotten a lot better recently.
And they're not even finished yet, and it's starting.
We really do appreciate your willingness to, you know, even more so be a part of the community. So thank you.
After seeing that building before and then the, I can say, most of the way after taking a tour with the Rotary and Optimist, that's quite an improvement. I hope in the future that you take the opportunity to go ahead and finish the whole front of that building with the support of the street facade program possibly next year. I think we ran into time restrictions on that, and I think it hurt your feelings a little bit. Let's get through that and maybe try that if you get an opportunity next year.
We got a guy doing the back right now.
Do you?
Yeah.
I'm in full support. Thank you for stepping out there and doing it.
If I could make a couple of comments, because I talked to Trevor and Audra about this. If I understand, the number of employees identified are equivalent full-time positions, because a lot of the employees, there's more numbers, but they're part-time.
Correct. We actually hired fourteen people this weekend.
Okay.
So, but those would be full-time equivalent.
Okay. And then the second question. Trevor, when you and I spoke, I think you said that you based this on a five-year amortization for each. Is that correct or not?
Yes, that's what the numbers is running at.
Okay. So it's up to council whether you grant five-year abatements on both, whether you could grant a higher abatement if you wished, at least on real estate. Traditionally, you've done that, but this is a little bit different type of abatement request than typical, because you don't have the manufacturing base, the jobs, and potentially the higher-paying jobs. So, you know, when we talked, I think Trevor indicated that Cory and Barb were comfortable with five-year abatements on both. I don't want to put words in your mouth either.
You'll take more if you're willing to get it, Barb.
Yeah, that's kind of the understanding, was we knew this was a little bit different of an abatement. It doesn't have the guaranteed, you know, return that you could easily measure. And so we wanted to go with the most palatable ask and then leave it up to you to do what you're comfortable with as council. And I mean, keep in mind that, you know, even, that there are certain measures that they have to hit where you can pull this back if you're not seeing the results that you're interested in. Because you go out ten years, if they suddenly close or whatnot, and you...
And we do know how to do that.
Yeah.
You know, when the question of a tax abatement first came up, we were like, kind of like scratching our head, like, well, you know, we'd like to do this, but can we do this for a movie? And so I think Audra did a lot of research on that, and Tim, and I think a few people down, even down at the state level, came back and, yes, nowhere does it say that a movie theater cannot be given a tax abatement. So, you know, I think that if other retailers in downtown, I don't want to call you retail, if other businesses in downtown see this, most downtown businesses are not subject for a tax abatement. But this is one exception, and since it falls into the category that's, makes it available, and especially since it's something that you're bringing to downtown, revitalizing a blighted area, bringing a movie theater, something that everyone in this community's talked about for years and years and years, I think it's overwhelming response. I think we've heard from everyone, from Tyler. Tyler only speaks when he has something very good to say usually.
Can they ask for more later, or is it five and a half?
The, typically, you identify what you're, what you're going to grant in the, this resolution, as well as the confirming resolution.
You know, if this is successful and Tyler has to, Tyler, Cory has to expand, you know, then, then he may come back and see us again someday. But for now, this is a good start. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I think you first need to make a decision on the length of the abatement, because that's left blank in the resolution. So before we adopt it, we need to fill that in.
So we need a motion then for that?
Well, the calculations that we had on this letter was from whatever it was.
Five years.
That I was sitting with his president at his board when we were talking about it, decided that five years would be a good number for us, and I agree with that.
Yeah. So you make that motion?
I'll make the motion for five years at the...
I'll second that motion.
And is that motion for both the personal property? Yes. And the... Is that right, Trevor?
Yeah, that's what we're... That's our rating number.
Okay. And that was for both? Okay. Okay. Basically, it looks like the amount is just under nine thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. A motion and a second?
Yes. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? And then next, I would need to introduce Resolution Number 2017-9. Twelve. Twelve. 2017-12.
Make a motion to introduce Resolution 2017-12 by short title only.
I have a motion and a second from Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Tim?
Resolution Number 2017-12, short title. Declaratory resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which designates an economic revitalization area upon the application of A B Cinema, Inc., which waives noncompliance to certain requirements by C six, dash one point one, dash twelve point one, and which grants tax abatements for real estate improvements and installation of equipment and personal property.
So I would look for a motion to pass.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2017-12.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2017-12. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Okay. The next step is we need to schedule a public hearing. And after the public hearing, you'll adopt a second resolution, if you choose to, which either confirms this resolution, or amends and confirms, or rejects. So you have three choices by statute. But you, you need to go ahead and schedule a public hearing, and that needs to be legally advertised, has to be advertised at least ten days in advance of the hearing day.
Okay. So do we just, do we need a motion for that, or do we just...
Just schedule it and then let fellas know so we can get the legal notice advertised.
Would we be ready to do this at our, at our next meeting on the nineteenth?
I would, boy, I'm here.
Okay. Okay, if that's the case, we'll go ahead and put you on the calendar for the nineteenth and of the public hearing then, and the second resolution.
Okay. Fellas, can we get to you? We can get to you out of him by that gap.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Be back in a couple weeks.
Maybe, Tim. Next thing is to discuss the Madison Street Plaza project. Kevin and, we have Kevin McCrory and Andrew Cunningham here from JPR.
You have two seconds to...
Yep, yep, yep. While you're doing that, I'm going to maybe preface a little bit.
You should, 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 you should,
that with a private group. That's a $10,000 savings. Switching the paper fields, and there's a fancy name here, the El Campo, El Campo pavers, to a Hollandstone paver. What that basically means is this main field of this brownish-red you see here, changes from a more expensive paver to a lesser expensive paver, and most of that was in the finish of the paver, and the size variation of the paper. It came in three sizes, I believe. And to create a pattern that we now are going to achieve, a different pattern by using a conventional four-by-eight paper. It's a good paper, it'll last just as long as the other paper, so you're not like buying down, and you're gonna have a failure out here, that's not gonna happen. It's a good paper, it just, I think you mentioned earlier, we went from a Cadillac to a Buick, which would be a good comparison, very good paper. That's a $26,392 savings. The reduction, reduced the quantity of the main field paving, okay, that's where these two drawings come in. If you squint your eyes, you'll see a little bit of that field of paving here, here, and here, that are gone. And this, this is the original plan that was bid, this is the reduction plan on the right. Left side, original, bid, this side, the reduction. So we've taken those off here, here, those fields right there are paved. That is the reduction of the main field pavers, with the, and then those get replaced with concrete that's poured instead.
Kevin, on that point, there's also one more thing we did, we talked to Don Burgdahl and some others, we actually enlarged the width of some of those bands that run through there.
Yes, good point. Yes, man, here.
Did you manage?
I mean, this is, for, for, or you're suddenly, you can't even tell that it went from, I think like a 12 to an 18, width, or something like that. Just that simple move of increasing those bands into concrete saves a bunch more paving. It didn't change the design, the overall intent of the project is still there. So that was, thank you for bringing that up. And then the substituting, the drains was a big one. We had cast iron trench drains, and you can still see them here, there was a series of there, here, here, and over here. By taking those out and going with a more economical standard square inlet drain, lesser of them, we're still draining properly, so we're not piling water up out here. But that change from a system that was designed to fit in a little bit nicer with the banding and that, to a more conventional drain, which will still look good, had a monumental savings of almost $22,000 on that alone. The reduction of the bottlers, and this is an easy one, this was very low-hanging fruit to do. We still have our, we had, for instance, right here, you can't see them there, but there's one, two, three, four, five, five bottlers on either entry to block traffic during a festival from coming into the street. We reduced that by one, there, there, and a couple more, easy ones here. So we still have all the safety we needed, the blocking of the streets, but we were able to pull four bottlers out of the equation. Again, we were really wringing the dish rag about at this point, trying to get every ounce of water out of the dish rag, good. And then taking the accent pavers, you can see here that there's a paper field here, that's no longer there, it's here. But we maintained the one out here, so when you drive by, you still have the good look of the plaza happening there. So this one, and this one, going back to concrete, and over here, they were the accent charcoal paper. And so that was a savings of $3,451, for a total of all those elements of $83,926,000. And there are a few other things, as the mayor said, that we might be able to look at a couple more thousand here and there. That would probably be maybe something in some of the site furnishings we have, the benches, and the trash depressants we have, and we're looking into that right now on the type we specified, how we can purchase them, maybe the city purchases them. These are things, you can just take a trash can out there and anyway, set it down, I mean, it's not like, there's no real installation to it, so that might save us several thousand dollars when we do those items, too. So that's, those are your two changes. The trees remain the same, the planters, the overall design, you can see, we haven't gone in here and gutted the plan, we still have our parking, we still have our lights, we still have the, all the other, all of the elements that really, we really gotta make this, a plaza. And one of the biggest things that stayed are the anchors for the tents, because this thing is to function with the big tents up in that during festivals and events. All those anchors remain anchored for festivals. We didn't touch those at all. So that's where we are. Any questions?
So it basically went from 784,000 down to 700, is pretty much where we're at, okay? So we're still 140,000 roughly, over the engineer's estimate now. And of this, the initial payment of this was coming from our capital campaign fund, which has 235,000 to 240,000, I'm not sure, in it. And then the patronicity campaign, which I'm happy to announce that as of this morning, we have exceeded, Melissa, drumroll.
$56,390 with 112,000.
And how many days left?
Seventeen.
So we're at 56,000, which means that IHCAA is gonna match 50,000 more to go toward the project. So we're 6,000 and some odd dollars over what we were seeking, and now we plead for everyone to continue to donate, because we can use the money here, okay? I would like to get that up to at least 65,000 in donations, I think that's easily obtainable. We've only had how many?
112 donors.
112 donors, and we have about 3,400 residences, so, and then businesses on top of that, so we'll get there. I think we'll exceed 65, but that's kind of the next goal. So where are we? We need to talk about how we can, okay, in the board of works meeting, the board of works approved accepting Primco's bid, based on the cost reductions that we just went over, and the means of council finding the funds to pay for this. Now, the first thing that I would throw out on the table here, at least for discussion, was when we were working on our 2018 budget, one of the things that I, and Phyllis, you may have to help me here, I think I had 150,000, or was that what we put toward, toward the Masters Heating Building?
I did.
I believe we had $150,000 set aside for renovation of the Marx Heating Building, to do that in 2018. Now, it's been sitting there for a year and a half now, we haven't done anything. We can leave it set another year, and use that 150,000 to go toward this. There were other things that we budgeted, capital project things that we budgeted. One of them was the intent of trying to purchase the brick home on the corner, we had 100,000 set aside for that. We could pull from that, however, I have been talking to the homeowner of the brick house, and I would suggest that we not take that money, because he may come around and be willing to sell that house. What else did we have on there, Phyllis?
The Hannon Nutman Bald Diamond.
The Hannon Nutman Bald Diamond, we had 250,000 set aside for that.
Marketing plan.
The marketing plan.
And loft housing.
And the loft housing. So really, the easiest one to pick from there would be the Marx, Masters Heating Building. Discussion, thoughts? Come on, guys.
I have no qualms about pulling that money that was discussed to use for the Marx, because I'm still not sure even investing in that building is...
Exactly. We don't even know what we're gonna do with it at this time.
Right, so I don't, I don't wanna hold on to 150,000 that might be used for Marx building. I would fully support shifting that to the Madison Street project.
I think the important thing to remember is momentum, keeping this rolling. Despite the rumors and headlines that this is getting derailed, it's not. We're moving this project forward, we've asked people to support it, they are supporting it, we've exceeded the patronicity goal, and we're gonna find a way to make this happen. And thank you all for working to find ways to reduce this, but it's gonna happen. Well, we had some lengthy meetings. And like we said, Kevin said, we've wronged and wronged and wronged, and anything else we try to take out of this would likely jeopardize the integrity of the looks and the quality of it, we don't wanna go there.
Right.
We don't wanna go there, we wanna have a nice plaza. So, you know, if we have 150,000 set aside for Masters Heating, right now, we're only at 140,000 shy with where we're at, so we should be good to go right there, just by doing this. And again, then, if any more patronicity money comes in, that'll just take away from that and put money back into Phyllis's bank. Tim?
Do we need a motion for that money?
I think what we would need would be a motion to reallocate the 2018 budget, so that the 150 that we have set aside, which was coming from our two-and-a-half million dollar capital campaign money, okay, that we just reallocated from the Masters Heating to go toward the Madison Street Plaza.
Do that with the, if the patronicity doesn't fill that report from there. So we keep the patronicity going.
Right, right. So yes, I'll make a motion to reallocate that 150,000 in the budget for 2018. Up to 150,000. Now, if patronicity money would come up...
Exceed.
Exceed our current goal, then that would take precedence in payment.
Absolutely.
And allow the, our patrons to help continue to support, as they've been doing very well. I rambled that.
I think it was pretty good.
But I'd be able to write that down on the minutes, one way or another. You got a short version of that?
I think, paraphrases.
Yeah, paraphrases.
The motion was, the motion was to concur with the approval of the contract, and authorize funding up 250,000 from the 2018 capital campaign.
And accept the project with the reductions that we've already suggested.
With the two reductions that were negotiated.
Well stated.
Thank you.
And Craig, did I hear you second that?
Yes, a second.
Any other discussion before we take this to a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Repose the same. Thank you. Thank you for coming down this evening, taking the time.
Thank you, everyone.
So we just, now, before we move off of the Madison Street Plaza, let me just again put out the plea to all Decatur residents and surrounding area residents that may benefit by enjoying the plaza, to consider making a donation to patronicity. You can either come into the city hall, drop off a check made out to the city of Decatur, or you can do it online by way of credit card. And I see several people here, Al, I saw you made a donation, thank you, appreciate it, and many others have been doing the same. It all adds up, it all adds up. So thank you all so very much. Last thing, did I have any agenda? No, two more things, I guess. The next thing would be to discuss the fireworks ordinance. Wiley mentioned at the last council meeting that he'd like to look at the fireworks ordinance and maybe discuss it. I sent a copy of the ordinance out to everyone, and I'll also come right back to you, Wiley, you were the one who brought it up, is there things on there that you'd like maybe to?
Yeah, as I read through it, and let others share their thoughts, too, the actual fireworks ordinance, I'm not so sure that I see any real need changing, I think maybe it lies more in the penalty.
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
Well, it's hard.
And, yeah.
You know how many times I got phone calls or something from residents saying, hey, there's fireworks going off over here, mind if, and you know, I can call the second shift officers, and I can go out there, well, by that time they get there, there's, they can't prove it, right? And that, so enforcing it is the tough thing.
Right, but I also had questions about how the penalty was, how it was worded here, because, and I see, number, under 91.99, number two, it says, each 10 days that prohibited conditions are maintained shall constitute a separate offense. If I'm reading that correctly, that after a 10-day period, then it would be, and if they were caught doing again, it would be a second offense, is that what that's trying to, is that what that's saying?
I'll delete that, because that may be something that was taken out of the statute. So, let me look at the state statute, to see if we pulled that right.
Okay, and then, also, if I'm reading this correctly, if someone was found and convicted of this, then the fine would not be any more than $100?
If it's related to fireworks.
And that they did not follow the ordinance.
Correct.
I guess I question, is $100 enough?
Have we ever fined anybody? Not that I ever know of, not since I've...
No citations have ever been...
Saturday night, at 11:30 at night, someone at Water's Edge is shooting off fireworks. I didn't call the police, but, but to be honest, fireworks are bigger and louder than they've ever been.
Yeah.
And they're just, more people purchase them, like to shoot them off, and if they would use some common courtesy...
But some people don't.
They just don't.
And I think it does speak, though, to, the people do need, if it's bothering them, they do need to report it. But like you said, sometimes, police show up. However, if they've been shooting very much, there's gonna be plenty of evidence on the ground.
And their best bet is not to call me.
Well, no.
Their best bet is... It just takes more time, doesn't it?
It may require them to actually videotape people shooting fireworks off, so these officers do have something to go on.
So maybe part of it is making people aware of ways in which they should report, and like videotaping of...
Ask Greg, I mean, Greg, if we get a complaint that people are shooting fireworks off during a period of time that they shouldn't, and one of our officers go out to investigate, and the neighbor's got videotape of two or three of the neighbors next door shooting them off, and it's documenting the time on their camera, whatever, is that sufficient for the officer to give a citation at that point?
Yes, if it's an ordinance, yeah, under a ordinance.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, you know, normally you have to fucking hit the person in particular that's doing that. But I think that if it's court argument, you know, if you find refusals and that type of stuff on somebody's property, again, you could go to the property owner, but again, it's an argument, so.
You know, half the time, I think the neighbors don't wanna call the police, because they don't wanna get, they don't wanna get the neighborhood upset with them, whatever, half the neighborhood's enjoying them, the other half the neighborhood's trying to sleep and getting woke up, so.
I'd suggest that I do an intentional enforcement campaign, where we would write articles in the Democrats stating that we are going to enforce this, and this is what's going to happen to you if you don't abide by our ordinance, and then spell out the ordinance, and Melissa can put it on Facebook, the police department has a Facebook page, you just hit people over and over and over that, I bet most people don't even know that, well, they know there's an ordinance, but they don't care, because we're not, we don't tell them that they can't do it.
And I'll be quite honestly, in the past, you know, if we found somebody... And I'll be quite honest with you, in the past, you know, if we found somebody from time to time, we would warn them, and then there wouldn't be any more problems.
Yeah.
Like you said, it depends on how far you're willing to do a restriction with it.
But could you check out what number two, what that means? Something that I would change is that it says that, and the first section under A1, it says two hours after sunset. So, if you pull up into a neighborhood and you're gonna argue with somebody about what time sunset was, so I...
National Weather Service always has.
I looked it up this year, and this year, between the twenty-ninth and July ninth, the sunset was between nine fifteen and nine sixteen. So, I would change that to say you can shoot them off until eleven P.M. or, and not give them, no gray area, you just be done at this time. Because now it says...
This is, some of this is taken out of the state statute. So, we can't deviate from that is the problem.
Yeah. And that's one of the dates, and the dates and the times are where we can't deviate.
So, you can't change the sunset?
Yeah.
So, you would have to go pull up on scene and then say, okay, hold on, let me check what time sunset was, and then we're gonna see when you shut these off?
Yeah. Just stay long, sign over, right?
Yeah, I thought it was. Kind of a hard thing to...
Welcome to government.
You wonder where common sense goes sometimes when they...
We adopted it, we adopted it per se by law, the state statute, and there's even some wording about not, you know, you can't, we could, we could be more strict, is that right?
Yeah, you could be more strict.
You're allowed to...
To enforce it.
You don't have to allow, you could only, you could give them a shorter period.
Yeah, we could.
Can't give them longer.
Have you ever seen anybody pull people over?
The state statute, and it's just a subject to enforce, right?
Yeah.
Nobody ever knows who shot them off, or what yard they came from. You'd be lucky once in a while. You do. Yes, all in all.
Well, we'll do a little promotion on it. We'll ask our friend Bob.
I will just throw this out. I've got a guy on the other street, we every year, go an hour, hour and a half, every year.
On the right?
On Master Drive, every year, go be an hour, hour and a half.
What year, what day?
What night?
What day and what time?
It starts like an hour, maybe a half hour before, start before sunset, start before it gets dark.
Is it in July?
No, it's on the fourth.
On the fourth, okay, and that's, and that's okay.
Well, I mean, it's...
Relentless.
Oh, relentless, it's all like a war. Yeah, I know, I don't think, and that's...
You've got ten days where you have seven hours. Every day.
But the guy that shot him on Saturday night doesn't know we have an ordinance. Yeah, but I don't think we, I don't think we should.
I don't think you can, they have a right by state law to shoot during those periods, and we can't judge.
Okay.
I said it wrong. We can't expand.
Rein it in. Reel it in.
We can't expand it, maybe.
All right, well, Tim, if you would look into the penalty part of that there, and we can discuss this again, we have a lot of time.
Thank you very much.
Yep, yep. The last thing, as I mentioned earlier, the request, okay, before I can negotiate or discuss purchasing of a residence or piece of property, it has to be confirmed by way of a resolution. And the home at the corner over here was actually authorized in a resolution in 2015. It was resolution number 2015 dash sixteen. And so, since we've already done the resolution, we don't need to read, reread or make a new resolution, but I would like expression from council that you would give me the authorization to possibly negotiate or get appraisals on that property. If that property, if the owner is willing to go to the next step, it would be on us to get the appraisals. We could only pay the average of two appraisals. And I don't know if you would take that or not, but...
I make a motion to give the mayor that authority.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Bunch of department heads are gone. Kurt, you got anything?
Salary ordinance.
Salary ordinance?
No, we're not doing that tonight. Yeah, we decided to take the salary ordinance, and we'll introduce the salary ordinance at our next meeting, and then we'll ratify it October third.
Good.
I've got one.
Tim has some things. Okay, good, Tim.
Jeremy previously requested adding a handicap parking spot...
Oh, yeah.
On Madison Street, and Bill was kind enough to go out and check our parking, handicap parking space.
Fire?
So, at this point, Bill found that there was one existing handicap parking space on Line Street that was no longer needed. So, I've prepared an ordinance that adds a handicap parking spot near 615 Madison Street. It's at the corner of the north-south alley, which intersects Madison Street midway between Sixth and South Street. It's where the new handicap spot will be located. And then, the handicap spot that we're taking out of the ordinance is on the north side of Line Street, near 928 Line Street, and it's two spaces south of the first alley off Winchester Street. So, Phyllis, what's the ordinance, X one on this?
Nine, I have a question on that.
Isn't there an address on that?
Yeah, it's 928 Line Street.
That's really hard to understand. I could, I could even find it, but the way it's described, it's the north side of Line Street, line unbroken, so...
I'm just saying, that's what it says. It's in the ordinance, anyway.
That's why I put the address down.
Okay, I've got the address in there. So, we're gonna take it out.
Let me ask a question.
Yeah.
Let's say upon that person moving away where we don't necessarily need a handicap space anymore, or that person passes away, and we don't need another handicap spot, how do we know about that?
Well, Bill had gone around and found out that it wasn't necessary any longer, we probably wouldn't have known. I mean, if there's a, if somebody requests a handicap parking spot, and that person moves or dies, it would be helpful if somebody either in that family or neighbors let us know, and then we can update our ordinance by taking that out.
I'd agree, but is there anything we can do prior to passing the ordinance? I'm just asking.
No. Because the handicap spot is created by an ordinance. You can't undo the ordinance until passing another ordinance changes it.
And this ordinance is doing what again? It is...
We're adding one spot.
Adding one spot.
On Madison Street, and we're deleting one on...
Okay, so this one ordinance is doing both.
Right.
Okay.
So, it's actually amending Chapter seventy-eight, schedules three of our existing code of ordinances.
Bill?
Are you asking to have somebody tell you when they don't need it any longer? Is that all you're asking?
That's all I'm asking, is when it's not necessary at that property. And I think it's only fair that we...
I mean, it would be very...
But that's not, but that's not gonna always happen either.
Bill?
I think the best way to do that is like we did this one. When somebody adds one, then I'll go and check and make sure they all are needed. Truthfully, there's not that many on side streets. We really have taken a lot away that are not needed any longer. We've removed a lot from our ordinance.
Right.
I think the best way to do it is as we add them, just to go out and make sure they're all needed.
Okay.
So, this would be dash nine? Okay, I will make a motion to place ordinance 2017 dash nine on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance number 2017 dash nine in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017 dash nine, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends Chapter seventy-eight, schedule three of the Decatur Code of Ordnances of 2015, as supplemented, to add a handicap parking space on Madison Street and to remove a handicap parking space on Line Street.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017 dash nine on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017 dash nine in its first reading. Have a roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley, sir.
Yes. I'll make a motion now to place ordinance 2017 dash nine on its second reading by short title only.
Second. A motion and a second to place ordinance 2017 dash nine in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017 dash nine, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends Chapter seventy-eight, schedule three of the Decatur Code of Ordnances of 2015, as supplemented, to add a handicap parking space on Madison Street and to remove a handicap parking space on Line Street.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017 dash nine on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 2017 dash nine in its second reading. I would have roll call vote.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
And Wiley, sir.
Yes.
We can go ahead and...
Okay. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2017 dash nine on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017 dash nine in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017 dash nine, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends Chapter seventy-eight, schedule three of the Decatur Code of Ordnances of 2015, as supplemented, to add a handicap parking space on Madison Street and to remove a handicap parking space on Line Street.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017 dash nine on its third reading.
Second. A motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017 dash nine in its third reading, and have a roll call vote.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley, sir.
Yes. Ordinance 2017 dash nine has been adopted. Thank you, Tim. Do you have anything else?
I do. I received an invoice from Barnes and Thornburg, if you recall. Tom Pittman agreed to provide assistance on the setting up of the, the loan revolving loan fund that we use to transfer funds to BIGs in order to take down the shape of the building. He, there was a, not to exceed three thousand plus advances, Bill, plus three thousand plus advances of twenty-nine dollars. I'll give that to Phyllis, and it'll be presented probably at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, it's all right.
Okay. Kurt, did you have anything? Done.
Page the nature trail last week, put them on a P and a P and a B, on driveway to Master Drive.
Good deal. Glad to get that Master Drive thing coming down the stretch here. Ian? Mr. Carbock? Melissa? Members of the public, do you have anything, ma'am? No? Bye? Tony?
I approve the additional funding, move the budget forward.
Yep, thank you. Council members.
Go ahead.
Quickly, shout out to two officers going above and beyond, in my opinion. Officer Sergeant Tharp, positive use of Facebook. We had a, the street closed at night. We had another situation where a power line was down, and Jamie immediately went to Facebook, got a little public service announcement out there, and it was shared many, many times, and just shows how quickly that news can positively spread. Secondly, to Kevin Gerber, our school resource officer, has really done a great job with communicating to the public and parents, traffic out to the school, just a lot of school-related things. I think it seems to be a really good fit for him, and just positive use of social media. It's good.
I think Greg will concur that actually the traffic at the school has been, yeah, this phase has not been a...
Under the circumstances, it's been...
Yeah. Not near as bad as when everyone was using Jackson Street. Being able to come around the curve and just keep going has made a little difference, so...
I think we should thank the Chamber and Main Street for putting on the Thursday night concerts. That was well-received, and some of those acts that came were bigger than the venue where they were playing. So, a lot of people enjoyed that. That was really, really awesome.
And the one that got rained out, Corey Cox, is coming back.
The twenty-first?
The twenty-first.
September twenty-first.
So, there will be one more, September twenty-first, on the Courthouse Square, so...
That'll be nice in the plaza.
It'll be, yeah. It'll be very nice.
We've got fifteen men and fifteen women, or more than, that have qualified, so we've got for the Decatur's First Annual Highland Games, so remember that on October seventh.
Nothing else? I'd look for a motion to approve the claims. I have a motion and a second to approve the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. We are adjourned. Thank you.